So the clock called the meeting to order. We'll rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united at heart, indivisible, with liberty and liberty of our own.
Sue, roll call, please.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedall?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here. Now, must you approve the consent agenda, Board of Representatives?
I'll make the motion, may I accept? I would like to make a motion to go into closed session after the meeting. Last month, or last meeting, I attempted this, and Dick wasn't here, and it was recommended that we didn't go into that meeting because of that, but Dick is here tonight, and for the purchase of real estate, I would make a motion that we go into closed session after a meeting.
I'll support.
Right, now, the motion in a second. Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
No.
That passes, so we'll add that as item number 10. We'll turn it down to 11. All right, now, citizen discussion items not on the agenda. All right, now, old business. Item A, Resolution 1119, purchasing policy. Mike?
If you recall, last summer, the Lowell Light and Power presented a modification in their purchase policy, which the City Council approved. At the time, I asked the City Council to allow me to revise the policy to somewhat mirror the Lowell Light and Power Board. I also mentioned at the time that the policy we use doesn't necessarily align with how we purchase items. Over the summer and fall, I worked with our department directors to modify our policy and make it to align on how the administration does operate, and I want to go through the policy with you to see if you would approve a resolution to modify the recommendations I'm making. Go to, well, we'll go to the policy. Currently, if you look, our current Code of Ordinance provides that the purchase of all purchases of material, supplies, and services that are to be conducted according to the policy developed by the city manager and approved by the City Council. The Council believes that the city is best served by adopting a comprehensive standardized procedure that will govern departmental purchases of materials, supplies, equipment, and services based on the estimated cost for the items. The City Council also supports a transparent and accountable process for the sale of cities' assets and the acceptance of donations. The intent of the policy explains the procedures for purchasing and bidding, the sale of city assets, and acceptance of donations. This policy is intended for all department directors and staff involved in purchasing materials, supplies, equipment, and services that are not specifically exempted from this policy. Purchases must be accompanied in a manner that assures the city is receiving the best overall value of the funds being expended. Department directors consist of the Assistant City Manager or Director of Public Works, Police Chief, City Clerk, and Treasurer. The sale of city assets is often subject to certain legal requirements that must be thoroughly understood before engaging in the sale process as described in the policy. Donations are often subject to certain legal requirements and must be thoroughly vetted before accepted by the city. Department directors and staff must use approved documents for recording quotes, bids, invoices, and purchase orders, and those will be actually attached to the policy. Capital purchases, as described in the policy, must be identified in an departmental capital improvement plan and subsequently approved as a capital line item in the current fiscal year operating budget. In the purchasing and bidding, the policy applies that all purchasing consistent with this policy's self-form shall benefit from a competitive process to the maximum extent practicable. This process will include the use of quotes where applicable for the use of formal advertising and/or sealed bids with the intent to encourage submission of bids by any and all qualified bidders. All purchasing shall be based in transparency, fairness, accountability, and equity. The city shall maintain ethical and impartial relationships with all companies, bidders, and suppliers. While typically the lowest qualified quote or bid will be accepted, the city is not required to accept the lowest bid or quote if the city deems it the best interest to accept other than the lowest bid or quote. Exemptions from the policy are the following: ongoing utility charges, such as our gas, electric, phone, cable, that we just pay once we get the bill; postage charges; financing charges; dues and subscriptions to professional organizations; consulting, engineering services; legal services; training from professional organizations; emergency purchases as approved by the city manager; election equipment, supplies, and products as required by state of Michigan law; Department of Public Works original equipment manufacturer supplies; frequent and recurring supplies for daily operations of city departments; informational technology services; and services that are not competitive in nature and/or services that are available from only one known and qualified source. We have a number of instances where the only items we can get are from one vendor. A perfect example is we have security doors that we can only get it from one vendor, or our Neptune meters we can only get from one vendor for our water, so that kind of explains that. The city shall use appropriate methods, including soliciting and considering alternative products and services from alternative qualified competitive vendors to encourage competitive quotes, proposals, and bids except in circumstances when seeking competitive quotes, proposals, or bids is impracticable or justifiable due to the limitation of qualified vendors serving the market or products meeting the specific requirement; reasonable uncertainty that competitive vendors can be relied upon to meet the required delivery or project schedules; known or perceived disparities in the skill, knowledge, integrity, experience, judgment, or performance of specific vendors; the existence of specialized requirements, including fit, function, size, weight, specification, durability, or compatibility for intended purposes; professional services. We do, we have a clause in the policy that we're proposing. Professional services, such as auditing, property and liability insurance, workers' compensation, and the like, shall be reviewed by the Assistant City Council at least every three years. The Council will determine if such services are satisfactory or proposals for such services shall be sought. We also develop bidding categories, purchasing and bidding categories and procedures. These are where we somewhat mirror Light and Power. If you recall, for budgeted expenditures, they were allowed three quotes up to $50,000 if it was budgeted, and if it was unbudgeted item, they were allowed three written quotes up to $20,000, up to $25,000. For us, I thought, I didn't think that was appropriate, so I went with three written email quotes from, or email quotes for $25,000 for budgeted expenditures or $10,000 for unbudgeted. This is a change from the current policy. Taking a step back, any purchase over $250 with credit card would require my approval. We would have a formal bidding process for any budgeted expenditures that are over $25,000 and up, $10,001 and up for any unbudgeted expenditures. Those would be sealed bid. And also should be noted that for any, for all categories, each piece of equipment over $5,000 must be budgeted to a capital equipment account in the annual operating budget pursuant to a capital improvement plan. The formal bidding process hasn't changed. We've noticed the potential bidders will be made a minimum of 10 days before the bid opening date, the same standards that we would have now. Bid specifications will be prepared by the department director requesting a purchase. The director will ensure that final bid specifications are developed independently of potential bidders, vendors, or suppliers for which bid specifications are prepared. The bid specifications shall indicate the deadline for submission of bids, the address to which bid must be submitted, and the date, time, and place that bids will be publicly opened and read. The city may request the city's consulting engineer to prepare specifications, notices and distribution of specifications to bidders for major public improvement projects. All specifications must be written in a clear and concise manner and must not arbitrarily eliminate qualified vendors and/or products. The department director or consulting engineer will be responsible for establishing and maintaining a file of specifications and associated project material. All bids for, all requests for bids shall include a statement that the city reserves the right to accept or reject any and all bids for good reason and no reason to waive the formalities or errors in the bidding process, and to accept any bid deemed in the best interest of the city, including bids that are not the lowest amount. When seeking bids, the department director will send specifications in bid form to all known, reliable, qualified vendors. The department director will be responsible for keeping a list of qualified vendors. A copy of the bid specifications will be kept in the office of the city clerk for public review during the bid, prior to the bid opening. Bid specifications will be posted on the city website until the time of the bid opening. When written bids are received, they will be stamped with the date and time received. Email bids will be printed, stamped, and sealed, and then below by the city clerk. All bids will be opened publicly at the time, date, and place designated in the notice and invitation for bids. Late bids shall be automatically rejected and returned unopened to the submitter. After bids have been opened, they will be tabulated and forwarded to the department director for a recommendation to the city manager or city council, one required or two otherwise awarded that bid. When an award of a bid requires city council approval, the department director's recommendation shall be forwarded to the city manager's office no later than the Thursday preceding the city council meeting where the award will be considered. All bids are open, and a bid awarded, all vendors shall be notified of acceptance or rejection. This shall be the responsibility to the department director or consulting engineer if applicable. The city will give preference to qualified vendors located within the city. We've also written a, we've also added to the policy deeming, such as MyDeal, Kent County purchasing. We have a provision in the purchasing policy to allow us to do that when we believe it's in our best interest. There's a couple of different intergovernmental pools that we can utilize, like, for example, if we're going to purchase vehicles from the state of Michigan, and I believe Kent County also provides us some different purchasing options as well. Emergency procurement. The city ordinance, section 272 of the code, provides that in case of an emergency, the director may purchase material, supplies, or services without meeting the requirements of the bidding and purchasing policy established pursuant to section 271 of the city code with the prior approval of the city manager. All emergency purchases shall be reported by the city manager to the council at their next council meeting. So, for example, if we had a flood or a major event, we would just go and make the purchases, and then we would report them to you. We also have provision to sell city assets. The sale of real property by the city may only occur under provisions of section 13.3 of the city charter. The sale of city personal property, including vehicles and equipment, shall be accompanied through publicly advertised sale conducted by the city, private auction house, or other governmental auction through Internet services, or other publicly advertised events. The city shall set a minimum bid price on each vehicle or piece of equipment expected to sell for $500 or more, and shall sell the property to the highest bidder who meets the minimum bid price set by the city. And then all, if we get any requests for any donations to the city, they need to be approved by the city council. So, the policy that we have now is a one-sheet policy. This policy is a four-page document that really, in my opinion, spells out very clearly what we can and cannot do in purchasing. We have a lot of times where we come up between Rich, me, Sue, and Susie, where we just, there's a lot of ambiguity in the policy, we just don't know sometimes, and what we try to do is actually, we utilize, I actually gather policies from a number of different communities and did research. The city of Walker, where I got the majority of this policy revision from, I felt this was a very thorough policy, and I felt it also aligned with a lot of what we believe the administration and department has need for us to go forward. So I'm recommending a revision to the purchasing policy and recommending that the council approve Resolution 1119, revising the policy.
Mike had a couple of questions on your exemptions. Does Lowell Light and Power's policy allow exemptions for legal services and consulting engineers?
The reason I do not know that, I can tell you that for legal services, the city charter spells out the requirements for legal services, so that's why I exempted it from the policy. And also, the consulting engineering services, this was a situation where I don't, I don't know what their policy is regarding that. The reason I, these were different is because we can utilize different types of processes for these.
Okay. I think Lowell Light and Power's policy for local vendors has a percentage-
Okay.
-that's approved of 10 or 15 percent.
Okay.
I just, I think it might be a good idea to put a number in there-
Sure.
-so that it's just a little clearer. I mean, we certainly want to support local businesses, but I think that it needs to be within a fairly narrow margin.
Sure, we can do that.
So maybe we could just check into what theirs is and follow that.
If you'd like, I can report back, and we don't have to vote on this this evening, and we can, I can come back.
I will look into, look into that.
Or you could just find out what theirs is, and I don't have a problem moving forward. I just think we should have a number in there. It seems like, from memory, it was 15 percent.
If you'd like, we could approve the policy subject to that change, and then I can report back to the council what that change is.
Yeah, just want to update us next month what number you put in there.
Not a problem, I can do that.
Yeah, because I can't remember what that change is, and I said that more, so it's-
I can do that.
And some of the bids, do you guys require bid bonds and personal bonds, and is it usually AI-type billing? Those are all in different documents outside this?
It depends on the project. A larger project, you're going to want some sort of AI, most likely, I've always used the AI-8 bonds, especially for like building projects. Normally, your engineers, if you have road projects, they would require certain performance bonds, is usually my experience, but definitely would want to, definitely want to have something of that nature.
What's that motion on with the addition of the percentage?
I'd make a motion to approve the revised purchasing policy and submit it.
I'll support.
Any other discussion of questions for Mike Rich? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, item B, Resolution 1419, 198 tax abatement policy.
Last fall, I discussed with the City Council the creation of a policy pertaining to Public Act 198 tax abatements. At the time, we discussed an application fee for the applicant to provide so the city can recover costs for processing these applications. We also discussed at the time a more comprehensive policy for approving these requests when they come in. I've attached a policy to consider, which I believe does this and develops a point system to determine how long we can provide an abatement for. This differs from my recommended policy of providing five years and having the applicant return for the remaining time. Under Public Act 198, an applicant is allowed an industrial facility tax credit for a maximum of 12 years. So the, what I'm developing, what I'm presenting to you is different than what I've always recommended in the past, and I want to go through that policy real quick before we go and we talk and take any action. So, going through that policy, the policy shall apply to the city's consideration and request to establish industrial development and plant rehabilitation developments and approved applications for industrial facility exemptions pursuant to Act 198 of the Public Acts of 1974 and amended. Filing of the application and definitions. The application for industrial facilities exemption certificate, or an IFT certificate, shall file a complete application for industrial facilities exemption certificate in conjunction with a written request to establish an industrial development district or plant rehabilitation district. This application must be accompanied by all applicable attachments, which are required by state law, and supporting information and payments of fees required by paragraph six. The city will not process or consider an applicant's request to establish a district until the city has received a properly completed application and fees. State statute dictates how the application has to be filed, but the state statute allows you to set a fee, but it doesn't, doesn't demand it. So if you were to form a district, the next step would be then you'd have to have establishment and boundary of the district. Under provisions of Public Act 198, a district must be established prior to the consideration of the application for an IFT certificate. The district must be a legal description of the parcel of land in which the abatement is to take place. If the district currently exists on the property, the applicant may proceed directly to an application of an IFT. If you recall, we recently just did this with King Milling, because there was some property that was partially in a district and partially wasn't, so we had, if you recall, we had to modify that. There's a limit on term of district. There will be no limit on the term of a district. However, the city shall consider a district void if an IFT certificate has not been approved within one year of establishing the district. So if we form a district, and then for some reason it went, a year later, say the development failed, the district goes away, so unless someone else had to come back, unless someone else wanted to, wanted to be considered, they would have to come back and form the district again in order to do that. The criteria for an IFT certificate approval. Criteria used in evaluating applications shall include the following. The city shall not consider a request to grant an IFT certificate before the city planning commission grants any required site plan approval for the project. We already do that now. The facility must use a local, a Lowell local address, which we already required. There must be no delinquent taxes or other amounts owed by the applicant to the city. We already don't, that is already in place. Permanent jobs will be created or retained as a result of the project, and there's no current pending or threatened litigation against the city by the applicant. That is somewhat new. Maximum term of abatement. The maximum term of abatement given by the city shall correspond to a formula that I'm going to, that I'm going to go over with you in a minute. The, rather than just granting automatic 12 years, they have to meet certain steps, and based on their score would determine how many years you could ground. So, then there's also an application fee. In order to cover costs incurred with staff review, publications, and compliance to this policy and Act, Public Act 198, there shall be a fee of $250 which shall accompany the application to create an industrial development district, and an additional fee of $600 to accompany the application for an IFT certificate. All fees shall be non-refundable. If you recall, when I came to you in the fall, we spent quite a bit of time, and we see resources processing these applications, and there is no, there is no, there is no remuneration of costs at this time, so we developed this policy, which we believe in line with what our costs are to process these, so that is being, that is being recommended to you. The city, the fee affidavit, there shall be attached to each IFT certificate application approved by the city and filed with the state tax commission and affidated, signed by the city manager and by the applicant, which states that no payment of any excess and, of any kind in excess of the fee allowed by state statute has been made or promised in exchange for favorable consideration of the application. I think we already do that now. An IFT certificate shall not be approved or issued unless a written agreement corresponding to the form and attachment to is entered between the city and the applicant filed with the Michigan Department of Treasury. We already have that form already, we just, we added it to this, to this policy. The city, under item nine, the city reserves the right to revoke an IFT certificate in accordance with section 15 of Act 198, Terms and Conditions of the Tax Abatement Agreement, or upon the failure of the applicant, or the owner, or an occupant of the facility subject to tax abatement to pay ad ver lorem and/or industrial facility taxes prior to the same becoming delinquent in accordance with applicable law. We also have a callback provision. An IFT certificate shall not be approved or issued unless the applicant agrees that if during the term of the IFT certificate, the applicant moves the jobs employed at the industrial facility subject to tax abatement to a location outside the city, the city shall have the right to require repayment equal to the total taxes abated by the city under the IFT certificate. This, under item 11, variances, the city reserves the right to vary from these policies. Such variances shall only be considered by the city council on a limited basis or the nature of the project, and the sole judgment of the city council as determined by the city council in the exercise of its reasonable discretion is so significant that it presents a unique opportunity for the city and its residents. Checklist of procedures. The city shall develop a checklist of procedures to allocate the responsibility for filing and processing an application between the city and the applicant. Is intended a copy of these policies, and the checklist will be provided to each potential applicant. At the time the applicant first comes, contacts the city to discuss a potential application. We already do this now. In the event of an inconsistency between the terms of these policies and Act 198, the provisions of Act 198 shall prevail. The city manager, under scheduled hearings, the city manager is hereby authorized to schedule the required public hearings for the creation of the industrial development district in consideration of the application for abatement, and to arrange for giving notice of these hearings as required by law. In his or her discretion, the city manager may instead request the city council to approve the time and date of these public hearings. These are already done now. So, if you, if you scroll to the next page, how we developed a point system, we did, we put a number of categories. The first one was development. The amount of proposed new development of buildings and personal property. Being that personal property is pretty much going away in 2023, this is, the personal property component is going to, is going to, is going to, is going to go away, and it's not even going to be, at one, at some time, it's not even part of Public Act 198, it's only going to be real property. But we developed a point system for, if there was, if the development was less than $500,000, we didn't grant any points to that. If the development was from $500,000 to $750,000, it'd be one point. $750,000 to $1 million would be two points. $1 million, $1 to $1,250,000 is three points. $1,250,000, $1 to $1.5 million, four points. $1.5, and $1.5 million and $1 to $1.75 million was five points. $1.75 million to $2 million was six points, and over $2 million was seven points. That was the first category. The second, the second category was quantity of jobs. Total number of jobs created or retained by the project, and so whatever the job number is, and you take, you multiply that by a factor of .15 to factor the number of points awarded. That's your second point category. The third, the third, the third would be quality of jobs. The total number of jobs created or retained by the project, which will have an hourly range equivalent to or exceeding 125% of the federal poverty income guidelines for a family of three, if health insurance is provided for, or at least 150% of the federal poverty guidelines for a family of three without providing health insurance. That, if that comes into play, that'll be the total number of jobs created doing that, multiplied by a factor of .4 to factor, and that will determine the points you have for that. New economy bonus. In order to attract and retain a diverse representation of businesses and industry, and to promote building a sustainable economy, the city will award bonus points to projects in certain industries and the research and office facilities of firms specializing in these fields. So, for example, six points would be available, available for high-tech, high-technology and battery fuel cells for renewable energy and semiconductors would be four points. Medical assembly equipment would be three points. Any aerospace, defense, pharmaceutical would also be three points. So, basically, how you, how this would fare is you would take the, so if you look at the formula in your, in your packet, if you had a $1.1 million project, that'd be eligible for three points. The quantity of jobs, say this is a project that had 25 quantity jobs at .15 ratio, that would be eligible for 3.75 points. The quality jobs that are over the 125% or 150% poverty guidelines, you would take those number of jobs and multiply them by four tenths of a point, and that would determine how many points you would get there. And then if you had a new economy bonus, say, for example, if you had a paper mill or, or something of that nature, that would be zero points. So, in that, in that project, it would be at 10.75 points. So in that, in that situation, the most that could be granted for that abatement is 10 years. I anticipate the projects that we have, based on the policy, probably about 10-year, 10 years is what we, you know, for the abatments that we've provided up to this point, they're probably 10-year abatments, and what we're requiring now is, if we granted them five, and when they come back for four, their remaining time, we would run them through this, we would run them through this, this point system, and then that would determine the total amount of years. So say, for example, if it only, if the formula came back at only 10 points, then they would have a remaining five years. But if you had somebody that was, you know, there's not a lot of developed property in the city that would be eligible for this, but if you did have one of these come available, you do have the, you do have the opportunity to grant up to 12 years.
But new and existing, neither one can exceed 12 years total, right?
Right, correct.
So if they had 12 more points, they could only get the 7.
Correct. Under the state statute, they've already, they've already had five years at that point.
Is the flip side of this, if after five years we find out they haven't created 15 jobs meeting that criteria- jobs meeting that criteria and that kind of thing, then we can say, okay, you're all done?
Correct. You have that, you have, you have the right to not grant it. You also have the right, if they didn't meet their terms of their agreement, you do have a callback provision.
How do we verify jobs?
That's a tough, that's tough. We've normally had to rely on, on the, on the company, on their word. In many instances, jobs are hard, that's always one that's been hard to track. Normally they have, you know, they, they'll provide, you know, that's probably, you know, maybe they have to provide tax statements or something of that nature in order to verify if we, if we wanted to do a thorough audit, but that's about the best way you can do it.
Is there a way to give, I'm sorry.
I was saying, in the past, they've kind of told us what they were doing just to help justify what we're gonna do for them. Now that it becomes a measuring point, I think it becomes more critical.
I would agree.
To track that if we can reasonably do that.
So is it, they say they're gonna vote 25, create 25 new jobs and in theory they only create two.
Right.
Or they overexaggerate to get more points.
Right.
Is there a way to give more weight to job creation instead of job retention? Because they think, oh, what you're doing is moving people from one building to another, you're not creating any new jobs.
Right. Well, they did, we did that in, like for quality jobs, that's where that factor came into play.
For job creation?
Yeah.
Well, it says or retain.
Well, no, the job's created or retained.
Yeah, so you're giving extra points for people who are just getting raised. I mean, you could. Just straight creating jobs should be.
You could, you could.
There may be a benefit to that too, I would think.
We could, we could modify that.
I like the fact that this uses a dollar amount to help justify it because we've kind of just handed it to everybody and sometimes the project's already started and we didn't really need to do this. But I, I think this is good to have a format that just lays it out in black and white how it works.
Well, I think there was a sticking point for all of us, the last one that came across because it wasn't creating any new jobs. But they're getting the same points as somebody who is developing property and creating 100 new jobs.
But they may get more points because their project is $2 million. So it can still be the same number of points, it's just not going to be points for employers.
And we also have to look a little further down the road too. We're giving them an abatement for up to 12 years, but then the next 88 out of 100 years, we aren't getting tax payments. We want to encourage whatever development we can to, just give this a good way of tracking it, but look at the big picture.
I do like the points for type of economy too.
It just seems to me this hurts a developer that, that can't spend the $500,000. They can only, they're gonna run right around 375, you know, and they're not putting a high tech and they're not doing renewables, but they are gonna do, you know, like a pharmaceutical. So then that works out to a three-year thing?
No, it would be more than that because you'd have to take into account how many jobs created, quantity of jobs.
Three, three points for the pharmaceutical.
Yeah, you just get three points for that mark, but you, you're correct, if you did only get a $500,000 total project, you wouldn't get any, you wouldn't get any points for that, but you would for the, you know, for depending on how many jobs created or retained.
But they're, if they come to us with a smaller project like Marty said, well, can't they come back at the end of their three years or whatever and say, hey, we'd like to apply again because we're expanding or?
It's possible, yeah. I mean, you're, you'd be eligible for 12 years, so depending on how it works, depending on what the project is, is possible. You may end up having, you may end up having to do a separate abatement. Yeah, yeah.
This doesn't address how many times they can come to us, really in years?
Well, the total 12.
No, I think, yeah, I think what, yeah, the maximum is 12. I think what we would do going forward, I mean, we have a couple that have to come back, but I think going forward when these come in, you would just, these are, this is what they would be eligible for year-wise and they, that's what you grant.
They'd have to apply.
Yeah, they'd have to apply.
Wouldn't the application fees be deterred from somebody just applying every year?
Really, no, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, they're gonna have to spend 850 bucks just to apply.
And they're gonna have to put this whole thing together so we can come up with a formula.
Right.
I just don't want to do something that's gonna hurt a small investor that wants to spend $475,000 here and create five new jobs and, you know, or two new jobs or one new job.
My experience, Marty, is that, is that for an IFT of that nature, that amount probably wouldn't even come in for an abatement, in my experience. You're usually, you're usually, most, my experience, I've done a number of these in my career, they're usually a minimum of a million dollar project.
This is pretty generous that you give, you start at $500,000.
Yeah.
A million doesn't buy much anymore.
Right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I might to further address Cliff's question and Greg's question, Mike hasn't gotten to it, but in the packet is a property tax abatement agreement that each applicant would be required to sign. If you look at that, it says that the applicant has to certify every two years the number of jobs created. So they'd actually have to sign an affidavit that they created the jobs and that they've made the investment that they said they're going to make. And then it does say, to your question, Cliff, the applicant understands and agrees if employment has not been retained or reached or an expansion or improvement was not substantially completed as described in the application, the city may reduce the term, uh, or revoke the certificate. So that leaves those options to you at that point.
So the recitals cover everything?
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Then the other thing is the variances, the city council does reserve the right to come back and talk if it was that person with that $475,000 investment to help them out.
All right. Motion for Resolution 1419.
I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution 1419.
I'll support it.
Any other questions, discussion, soup?
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweho?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right. Board of C, Community Gardens.
I'm gonna turn this over to the city attorney, so he can explain to you what we're, what we're looking at.
Thank you. Actually, let me begin by saying there's really two different issues here as I see it. One is the issue of what you want to or do not want to permit to be placed or grown within the public right of way. And basically, as we all know, that's the space between the sidewalk and the street. That's one issue. The second issue is community gardens by themselves. Are you going to permit them to take place within a certain zone, district or zone districts? And then if you are going to permit that, under what restrictions or terms and conditions that you want to allow that to happen? Mike's done a good job of outlining all of the provisions in the city code that we dealt with when we dealt with this issue before. I would just point out, for the first issue, if you look at, let me get the section number If you look at section 23 point dash 46, conditions declared to be a public nuisance, see that? If you look at the third item there, weeds, grasses, and undergrowth higher than 12 inches. And then going to the next section, 2347, it says that these uses within these areas must be free of the nuisances described in 2346. And if you look at those areas, they include the developed lots, they include the front 25 feet measured from improved right of ways. And then if you go to 2348, it picks up this issue of public rights of way or the space between the sidewalk and the street. It says for every property that is to be maintained pursuant to 2347A and B, shall also include the same maintenance by property owner, tenant, or other responsible party of such property in the area between the property's front property line and improved public road or street, and in the case of private roads, et cetera, the private over street. So in summary, when you put all of those together, currently, your ordinances prohibit any growth within the public right of way that's higher than 12 feet, 12 inches. In addition to that, there's a special provision under the zoning code that deals with intersections. And there's a restriction when you have property located at an intersection to locate those kinds of things outside what's called clear vision corners. And so there's rectangular corners at each corner of the intersection where you're prohibited from having growth. So I would say the first issue for you to discuss would be if you want to do anything with respect to the public right of way restriction, if you want to make it clearer, make it more restrictive, make it less restrictive. With that, I'd throw it back to the council. We can come back to the second issue when we, if asked this first.
Dick, wasn't there a case law somewhere where the homeowner was allowed, that the city lost, where they tried to enforce something in the right of way?
Yeah, I remember that case. I haven't looked at it lately, but it was, it was fact specific and the facts were vastly different than the facts that we had in, in the particular issue that we had here. It's completely different. There's no, no question in my mind, no question in my mind that the city has the right to regulate the uses within the public right of way. It is not private property, it's public property, in my mind. Now, there's also another provision, Mike, where I believe it's under trees, I don't know that you put it in here, Mike.
It's in here.
Was it in here where the city manager has the authority to authorize the location of trees within the public right of way?
Correct. 2328.
One of the, the other, one of the other maybe ambiguities here was what is meant by the use of the term. The use of the terms weeds, grasses, and undergrowth higher than 12 inches. You recall the question came up, would a tomato plant fall, for example, within a category of weeds, grasses, and undergrowth? And, or a bee sock? And the argument was made, well, since you don't specifically prohibit it, it must be allowed.
So you just change that to any planting or growth?
Well, that may be one, I, I think if that were your direction, that would provide some clarity here that, you know, that any, any growth of any type shall not be higher than, and I'm not sure 12 inches is, is the right, whether it's 18 inches or whether it's six inches. Not sure where the 12 inches comes from.
Right. And when this came up, I think somebody went around and did a quick count and there were 30-some properties that were in violation. And we are complaint-based enforcement, but are we gonna make everybody go rip out their landscaping and start a period of beach and he's got something in his front yard?
You start a little bit there.
But it's tough and we tell the homeowner they have to take care of that, but then, and, and we need to be restrictive, I agree, but we're also talking about trespassing. It's public property, how can you be charged with trespassing on public property?
You can be charged with trespassing on public property. If someone were to come into this building without any authorization, they would be trespassing.
That's in a building, but if it's public right of way on the street.
Someone would be coming into a park without authority, after the park had closed, that would be trespassing.
But the right of way in, in front of their house?
Yep.
Is it, is it more the trespass would be violating, if, just to use the 12-inch example, if I put a bunch of 18-inch grasses in my front yard, does that constitute a trespass?
No, that would be, that's the better way to deal with it, Cliff, is to have a prohibition against a certain type of planting or a certain height of plantings.
Does the concern is safety?
Certainly clear vision.
Right of way?
There is a clear vision area specifically to the corners, that's what the city attorney was talking about, specifically right of ways. This was not the first incident we've had with someone putting plantings in the right of way that caused a vision obstruction. One was on South Jackson and we had to remove all the wildflowers and she had planted in the right of way because it was a vision obstruction when we approached the stop sign.
The other thing is that there is a, and I think Andy Moore referenced it in his memorandum, there's a tendency to allow growth to go unabated there, that it'll overlap into the sidewalk and then indoor the street, I suppose, and cause some obstruction because it, it just, you know, if it gets too large, it just tends to get larger.
Dick, is the, is the 25 feet at the 90-degree corner where the two streets and then that's where your 25 feet come back to? Is that what you're talking about?
That is correct.
That's correct for the clear vision, that's correct for the clear vision. It's 25, is it 25 feet?
25.
What if you add flowers or that were less than 12 or think you're okay? Because I know a lot of people do that landscaping right there because they're tired and the kids coming around the corner and it's hard to grow grass. So I know why they do that, but again, it's gonna restrict it at 12 inches high regardless of what you do there.
And it's not just growth. We have it in winter with salt piles, where people pile their snow up by the corner specifically in Maine and Hudson with the businesses there that were, they were pushing the snow to the corner and you couldn't see clearly around the corner and we had to have them come and remove that as well.
So in your opinion, is the 12-inch, 12-inch height, is that a, a wise marker?
I, I'm gonna err on the side of caution and say 12 inches is probably gonna be your max, because if you're sitting in a Corvette or a Miata, you're sitting lower versus a truck that you drive where you're sitting three feet above the roadway. You can see a lot further when you're sitting up higher. So if you're sitting in a lower vehicle, I think 12 inches is probably gonna be your benchmark.
The other issue that came up, and Steve, you might recall this, is that not only do you have this issue potentially at corners, but at driveways, when people are backing out of their driveways, if you've got, you have a lot of growth there before you go into the street, that causes an issue also.
I, I didn't see anything, I noticed anything about signs, but I, but I know people have done it on the corners and they have beautiful signs that this is my residence, so there's nothing about, perhaps a sign on that corner, even though it's not weeds, grass, or, or tall, but.
There is a sign ordinance for the city as well and it's actually in a different section of the zone.
Is it limited to residential signs as well or just commercial signs?
There's probably. It does accept a political.
Yes, exactly.
But yes, 13 or 14. You cannot have temporary signs in any residential district anywhere, which was another issue, which is the other part of this, was the community garden, was in this particular case, there were signs, there were more than, I think two seconds.